Thank you so much for coming out here tonight. And tonight is a very special night because I know we're used to the regular Board of Education meetings that are usually every month. But tonight, we're having a town hall meeting. So it's meant to be a smaller, more intimate setting, more of a family feel, where we're able to highlight specific things, answer questions that you might have. I know when you walked in, they gave you index cards and I think some of you have been writing out some of your questions. And we really appreciate, I just want to take a moment to officially welcome all of you for coming here tonight. We want to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have a student named Alberto Colanco. And I'm not sure if they're outside. Alberto Colanco. Thank you for coming. If you can leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance... I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this moment, we'll continue, and we're going to have the Pledge of Ethics by Ladwina Kadab. Ladwina?
As a member of the Elizabeth Public Schools Professional Learning Community, I'll treat people as I wish to be treated. To do that, I pledge to understand that the school community is a special place. Listen respectfully when someone else is speaking about clinical subvention and non-integrity. Speak in a con voice and newspaper language. Dress appropriately for teaching and learning. Inspire the best in myself and others by celebrating successes and learning from mistakes. Care about others by demonstrating acts of kindness. Be a lifelong learner by taking every opportunity to learn from others.
Great job. Let's give both a round of applause. Just in case you don't know who I am, my name is Carlos Vaneo. I'm actually the Councilman of this ward, the fourth ward here in the city of Elizabeth. And I was invited here tonight just to be the facilitator during the discussion that we were going to have with the Board of Education members. But before we continue, Equine Lincoln School Number 14 is going to be performing "Friend Like Me" from Aladdin, music by Alan Menken, lyrics by Tim Rice and Howard Ashman.
Got it. Only touch the lamp. Only touch the lamp! Oh, rocks are falling all over me! What's going on? Oh, great, just great. Now how am I supposed to get out of here now? Oh, this isn't fair! Hello? Does anybody... Hey, are you fully getting out of here too? I know how you feel. My name's Aladdin. Wow, this will just fly. Got any other ideas? Wait, you see something? I'm sorry, I can't understand what you're trying to say. Does anybody else speak Arabic?
Rock the lamp!
You want me to rock the lamp? Okay, what is that gonna do?
Here's Jeannie! Wow, thanks kids. You have no idea what's the life of being trapped inside that teeny little lamp for the last 10,000 years. 22 hours and 53 seconds. I have the world's worst wedgie! Oh, look at my gut. I need to call Jeannie crack. Let me be honest, do I have lamp breath?
Who are you?
I'm a smurf with a thyroid problem. I'm a genie, and you know what that means? You got three. Count 'em. One, two, three. Ha ha ha!
I do?
Yeah, I know I'm taking it easy, but first we gotta go over some rules for it. Let's see. How to keep the coffee cans, coffee, blam, the hammer, Harry Potter, Harry Potter, Harry Potter. I'm a big fan. Ah, here we go. Genie rule. Rule number one: There's no wishing for more wishes. That's a dance that genie labor loves, but a big edible, forget about it. Rule number two: I can't make someone fall in love with you. I did that one for Kim Kardashian. Apparently, her magic only lasts 72 days. Rule number three: I can't raise the dead. But if you have an iPhone, there's an app to that.
Okay, so let me get this straight. You're my genie and I'm your master?
Yup, that's what we genies do. It's all we do. Oh, sure, sounds like a glamorous game. You spend your whole life trapped inside that teeny little lamp, dawdling out wish after wish after wish. I know you're pretty much old. But hey, what am I talking about me for? This is your lucky day sport, and you have no idea what's in store, friend. It's a musical! It's a big musical! Oh my, oh no, na na. Can't control it, can't control it, can't control it. I'm a little high. Mister Liger, I wish you would please... I'm looking for you, big one. Never had a brain, never had a brain, never had a brain, never had a brain. My dad had a light meal.
And we thought we came here tonight for a town hall meeting. I think we were here for a Broadway musical. Let's give it another round of applause. That was excellent. How I said in the beginning, this is a family environment, a town hall meeting, something more in the smaller scale for us to really be more intimate and get to know each other a little bit more and discuss some of the items that are heavy on your heart as well. I just want to take a minute, minute and a half for you actually just to introduce yourself to someone that's close to you that might not know you, because as I said before, we are a family. So just take a minute, say hi to someone near you, just say who you are. Okay, great. Now that we know each other a little bit better, we're going to move on. Now we're going to actually see a video. We're going to see two videos. The two videos are so that you could gain more knowledge on two different specific things, and at the same time, we could enhance some of the questions that you might have as we proceed. The first one is our core beliefs for the Elizabeth Board of Education school system.
We believe all students can learn and achieve their high goals.
We will ensure that all students graduate prepared for the difficult secondary education.
We believe that teachers make a positive difference in student achievement.
We will recruit, develop, retain, and celebrate role-fulled teachers.
We believe that effective leaders produce excellent results.
We will improve, develop, retain, and reward well-driven leaders.
We believe that high-performance teams produce a legacy that can generate...
We will build a high-performance team that achieves excellence.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. My name is Fernando Masco. I'm the Vice President of the Elizabeth Board of Education. And it's a very special night for us. We've done town hall meetings before, but I think this gives us an opportunity to address some of the concerns of the community, that those that feel that they don't necessarily have access to us, are, we can present ourselves, and listen to the questions and comments that you have, and answer them to the best of our ability. Now, over the past five or six months, this current board has been under attack by certain, the influence, external influence that don't necessarily have the best interest of the children of the city of Elizabeth at heart. So we launched an investigation into ourselves to make sure that all the policies and the procedures that were being placed and taking place in Elizabeth were revised and reviewed. So the next video that I'd like to show you is the results of that investigation by the former Supreme Court Justice, Gary Snyder.
Now, I've conducted a long, detailed, comprehensive review of those allegations. And I've concluded Star Ledger allegations about pressuring employees to donate to board election campaigns are inaccurate, unfair, and nonsubstantial. Star Ledger had seven identified sources for the story. Normally or unknowably, every one of those sources was biased against the city's Board of Education. Their bias wasn't disclosed. The non-disclosure bias, violent, ethnic, libel, and journalists, I'm sure, are true. As I said before, normally around, Star Ledger articles relied on seven unidentified sources. And I'm going to talk about each one of them. But every single one had hot, men, adversarial relationships with the board, the superintendent, and Star Ledger articles, and its headquarters, never disclosed the bias. So, Star Ledger, a parent, a student, a parent, a student, a parent, a student, who's been centralized by the organization, Mayor Bolwich, allied, and the center of the system, consistently repeated, trying to undermine this board by requesting the State Department of Investigation, that the board's investigations, on the rings, he and his allies have submitted, Oprah requested that everything they could to grab down these sources. It's why he's not having an estimate. And that kind of harassment has gone on for the last five or six years. The foul odor in Elizabeth these days cannot be blamed on oil refineries along the drain. It is from the ethical rot created by the city's Board of Education. The editorial goes on and says, several authoritative sources, including a former superintendent, Tom Bun, the board fighter, and a former principal, Frank Questle, say that it's precisely what happened. To shut out of the system if they don't fight, and utterly harsh, unfair, distorted. Elizabeth's ranking on the state tests compared to those other 37 communities have gone up. There is only one school district in New Jersey that has had three public schools in the last five years, a word of the Blue River. And that school district is Elizabeth. The Washington Post, every year, publishes a challenging issue, and we cite it on the website in the report. It evaluates high schools throughout the country on the basis of how well they prepare students for college. In 2011, they ranked Elizabeth High Schools second in New Jersey in 176th economy. When in 2005, the popular news were games for the dead. Elizabeth had 11 kids that made perfect scores on the state's standardized exam. In 2011, on November 27, 2011, they had a perfect score awards ceremony in Elizabeth, at which all the parents were invited to see 330 perfect score awards given to Elizabeth High School students. That's an increase of about 26%. We had a 131% of students. Of those 131, 41% never made a donation to a board election. Of those employees who were recruited, 63% never participated in an activity, never had a donation. And of a 131 employees, only one, one employee said he once won an eighth, he felt pressured to make a donation. The board of the election, the editorial, the investigation, is harmful and irresponsible. The Star Ledger never said in its articles or editorial that of the 15 employees who are related to perfect grades, most of them got their jobs before they were elected or joined the board. You read the Star Ledger story in editorial, you'll never see it. Nor did the Star Ledger explain that before 2008 in New Jersey, it was legal for boards to employ relatives of board members. Did the Star Ledger explain that Ronald Davidson, for example, had been brought up on tenure charges because he was accused of not allowing disabled students to ride an elevator, and because he was accused of sexual harassment? That is one of their sources. His bias against the board was not disclosed. Did the Star Ledger explain that Frank Questle has been serving with Mayor Bolwich on the city council for almost a decade? That Frank Questle was a councilman who voted for that shady land deal that the city council had to vote? Did the pledge or explain that in that same year, there was a testimonial dinner for Frank Questle, sponsored by Senator Lesniak and Mayor Bolwich? And where the dinner chairman was Louis Rodriguez, the guy who was supposed to buy the land? Star Ledger never told their readers that. And we have citations in the report to the most responsible journalistic ethic scientists that die, who stay, who's all over the country. And they can push the theory that if you have a biased source, your obligations are disclosed through the source's lies, and that mean that. And we outline the bias of every single one of those seven sources. And because that fundamental principle of journalism was violated, we conclude that the ledger's reliance on those sources was inconsistent with well-executing journalistic principles. And that their allegations of political pressure simply are false, they're nonsubstantial, and they're not reliable. We own over 500 school districts in New Jersey. And here is Elizabeth, a powerful, tightened district that our work fought for benefit from adequate funding. A school district that has demonstrated that with enough funding and good leadership, it can provide its children with extraordinary chances for educational progress. Why would the Star Ledger single out this district for such a hostile, savage, adversary series of violence? I conclude with the observation that the parents in the Elizabeth school children ought to be proud of their school system, and that they justify and take pride in the kind of school system that their children attend.
Good evening. How's everyone doing? You can all hear me. Give it a minute, not before you can all hear me. We have the report we presented to you, and there are copies available when you leave. The practice of an institution like the Board of Ed actually hiring someone outside to do an independent investigation is not a new idea. This was something that was well thought out and discussed among the board, elected to decide this would be the best avenue to try to get to the root of all these accusations and bring back a belief from the community in what the Elizabeth Board of Education employs here. Over the last several years, there's been a lot of changes in Elizabeth. And they haven't been easy, and sometimes the change is not always seen. Sometimes people are just used to doing things the old way, or they don't feel that change is needed. And that's the reality of any organization. In order to move it forwards, sometimes you say, you have to break a few eggs to make an omelet. And it happens. And we can understand that some people would be critical of those changes. But overall, we feel that the results speak for themselves. So when this all happened, and it was all due to us, knowing here is, you know, a superhero or any kind of group, just people like you from the community who decided to take this on for our own interest. Because I have reasons. I don't ask. That's why I do it. And we read, now see, the models, Fernando can speak for their own reasons. You know, we have the best interests in our city, and we believe that a good educational system is the foundation of a great city. And so we were worried, and this is what we decided to do. Will we be criticized for doing it or not doing enough? We understand that. With opportunities like this, for us, criticism is a part of it. I invite you all to get a copy of the report, read it at your own leisure, do your own research, and come to your own conclusion of what really happened here. I can give you a perfect example. If you had an opportunity this past Saturday to participate in our parade, it was a beautiful event. I don't think there was another parade in the whole state of New Jersey. Yet, we heard no mention of the Star Ledger about the parade. Local Channel 12 wasn't there. Not because they weren't invited, they just weren't interested because it wasn't bad news. So this is the kind of things that we fight for because we have to promote this. We have, we're advocates for your children and their education, and we have to defend it. And you may know the conclusion. That's what I consider would like me to do. Read it, do the research, take the time. It's important enough obviously to you to come in. So take the time, take a copy of the report, read it for yourselves. And we hope that in the end, you'll see that we were vindicated. And the institution that is the Elizabeth Board of Education was victimized in the process. Thank you.
The last few words that the justice said is, parents of the students of the city of Elizabeth should be proud of, and I have three children in the school system, and I'm very proud of the educations that they're getting, and very happy with it. So that's why I'm here, as well as my colleagues. So can we go on to... The last few things before we take some questions is, we presented the budget a couple weeks ago. We just want to go over some key highlights of the budget. We had the budget hearing, and there was no one here. So now we're going to take the opportunity to go over it just quickly once again. Second year in a row, we're very proud to announce that there is 0% tax increase to the City of Elizabeth Tax Fair. We're going to continue to keep all our services, all our programs with 0% increase to the Elizabeth Tax Fair. Once again, two years, 2011, 2012, and moving forward once again. And I'm proud of my colleagues, and I'm proud of the administration for being able to manage so the district so soundly. Obviously, many of you have heard what our vision is. Our vision is to become the best, one of the best school systems in America. Have you seen, I'm sure you've seen some banners around town. I'm very proud of them. The first is, it's as easy as 0123, 0% tax increase, 2011, 2012, 2012, 2013. We're the number one urban school district in New Jersey. We have the number two high school in Elizabeth High School, which is the number two high school in New Jersey, according to the Washington Post. And as the report, as Justice Thonix has mentioned, three Blue River schools, the only school system in New Jersey that has to be. the only school system in New Jersey that has three. Now, if you take a look, and I know this is kind of complicated, but the way that we broke it out over the past 10 years, if you look at the increases in what your city tax bill has been as opposed to what our increase in your tax levy is, the city has raised taxes $125 million over the past 10 years where we have opened new schools, tenement, added all new programs. In that same time period, we've increased $48 million. Whereas it's, and specifically the last years, there was a 0% tax increase to the residents of the city of Elizabeth. So we're very proud of that. We've added new schools, 22,000 kids in uniforms. We're very proud of the fact that we've been able to keep our costs down. If you take a look at what, how our per people costs are spent, it's $17,000 per student per year. But if you take a look at what our administrative cost for that, which is the central administration, school administration, business services, human resources, and all the other utilities. We are 1,500 per student, which is well below the state average when you compare our district to the others throughout the estate. Once again, this year, according to CUSAC, we were the, we were once again named the high performing district in instruction program, instruction programs, operation management, and personnel. 22,573 students in uniform. That's an initiative that started a few years ago. It has been a success. Parents are very happy with it. The community is very happy with it. And hopefully, next year, we're going to introduce Jefferson, uniforms in the Jefferson, which will be the final school to go into a full uniform. We provide numerous hours of training to our security guards. We have partnerships with the United Crime Stoppers. We're doing a very, very, we're very active as far as trying to keep our, not only our students safe, but our staff and our teachers safe as well. So we're very active as far as training our security guards and our staff. This year, we were also awarded a Healthy Schools Program by the Department of, by, by, what's it? The Healthy Schools Program by the Greater Healthier Generation Alliance, especially at William Hallowell Leadership Academy. We're trying to promote a healthier lifestyle because ultimately that will lead to healthier goals. Many community initiatives through this year, we partnered up with the state police to do a co-drive, which was very successful. We do a Read Across America, the Top Physical Challenge, where the Read Across America, a lot of my colleagues go to the different schools and read to the kids of all ages and promote reading. So it's a very successful program where we go out and meet with the community. This is our new initiative that we're undertaking. We want to try to go as free as possible. We understand that it's the time of the times that we have to protect our environment. And we're being very active in trying to get as many plants to conserve the environment, energy saving plants, to try to reduce waste. And that's an ongoing program that's going to be moving on from here forward. We have a lot of projects coming up this year as far as construction. We're happy to say that we're going to be renovating the media center at School 7, one of our Blue Ribboned schools. Renovating the media center at School 12, as well as 16. And we're going to install heating and air conditioning in 15 classrooms. Many of the other improvements are obviously the locker rooms at School 26, upgrading the library at 31, installing an elevator at 80, installing a ramp at 80, renovating the art room at the Adiatics, and cafeteria renovation at School 80. More of our improvements are renovation of the media center at 83, construction of a Black Box Theater at 84, construction of an art gallery at 84, install another elevator at 88, ramp at 88, another elevator at 89, and a ramp at 89 as well. One of the other initiatives that we're going to be taking, not only at the Thomas Edison Center, but also at the Dwyer Hospital, and as we can see a couple of the drawings of what they're going to look like are the ID centers, where that's going to be a big part of allowing the community to have access to library, internet, computers. That's going to be at those facilities this upcoming year. And School 21, one that's been on our minds for a long time. It's, if you actually take a drive by School 21, you can see the destruction is moving very quickly. We hope that the destruction of it will be done by the beginning of the school year. We're anticipating at least by next year that we should be fully operational with that school. That's what the drawing, the architect's drawing of the final school will look like. Also, we'll be groundbreaking now, next month, at the New Academic High School, which is going to be located right next door to Jefferson House. And that may be vacant land there. We're very excited about that. We have, we've been able to distribute iPads to many of the students throughout the high school. And we're moving forward where a lot of the curriculum will be able to be held out the student's iPad, which is moving forward the way that technology is moving. You know, now it's going to save the cost of books and it's going to be able to have a student have everything right at the palm of his hand. We're looking to add smart boards to each classroom and upgrade our technology to make sure that we have a state of the art facilities in every facility. Our high school graduation standards are still the number one in the state. We have to acquire 160 hours, 160 credits to graduate from high school. But it's not only the credits to graduate from high school. They have to afford 60 hours of community service. So that is leading the state by far. Once again, we're very proud of the successes that we have achieved in our district. We understand that there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And that's why we're here this evening, because we want to hear from you. But we are very proud of the three Blue Ribboned schools that we have in the district. We now have instituted a program that all students in the Elizabeth type schools have to take Algebra I, it's great. So that's really put us, tries to, attempts to put us forward as far as the rest of the schools throughout the state. Right, the studies show that those students that do take Algebra I earlier have a greater chance of success throughout their high school career. The Washington Post, once again, recognized Elizabeth High School as the number two high school in the state of New Jersey. Yes, this is the advanced placement course offerings. What we're trying to do is we're going to try to increase the number of students that take advanced placement classes. And we feel that by, by 2012, 1,300 is the number of students that are going to be taking advanced placement tests. As the Judge Stottic video commented, this year, we had 330 perfect scores of the New Jersey ASK standardized test, which is up 2,000 percent since 2005. And we're very proud of all the students that achieved that. And they are the three Blue Ribboned schools, William Hallowell, School 22, Victim Radler, School 21, and Terrence Riley, School Number 7. A few weeks ago, there was an article in the Star Ledger that Paul Trachterberg, who is the founder of the Educational Law Center, issued a report that the Elizabeth School Board, and I quote, "Significant improvements in student achievement scores in language arts and mathematics are every year." We're very focused on improving all of our children's test scores, not only in the Blue Ribboned schools, but in every school throughout the community. And we feel that we're doing an excellent job. And the letter continues to read that every school district should seek to emulate Elizabeth's record of accomplishment, improvement, and recognition. For a district overwhelmingly populated by poor minority students, it's an extraordinary issue. Once again, I want to thank all of you for sitting through our presentations. I'm going to turn it over back to Councilman Sadea so that he can, we can go over some of the questions that he may have. Thank you. Before we continue with the questions, I just want to, in case you have any questions with you, you can give it to Dr. Calvis. I just want to highlight a couple of people there in the room. The superintendent, Pablo Munoz, is there in the back, just in case you don't know who he is. We have two assistant superintendents. We have Ogo Hugamire standing right there right next to him. And we have Jerome Dunn sitting at the table right there. We have a couple of community leaders as well. I know Reverend Steffi Barbie, um, Don. Reverend Steffi Barbie was just here. You probably just stepped back. He's the president of the National Action Network. He was here, Catherine Centillian, is here from Jefferson Park Ministries. And also Tony Montero is here as well, another community leader that we know very well. And I just wanted to introduce all the board members, just in case there's someone here that might not know who they are. Fernando Nasco, of course, he was here speaking before. Carlos Trujillo, Marie Munt, and Elsie Ospina. So while we thank them all. And just in case you're wondering, how come there's only four board members? If there would be five, then it would be an official quorum. So we had to keep it under five so we could have this type of meeting here tonight. So I know they're collecting it. Don is going to hand me one of the cards. I'm going to just read the question out loud. And then I'll leave it to Liberty or whichever board member chooses to answer the question. First question, how many new schools will be open this year? Well, actually, yeah, this year, 2012. How many new schools will be open this year?